Good evening. I will call the April Common Council meeting to order. It's the final meeting of the 2014-2015 council. All members are present and have reported so on the voting machine. Thank you for being here, and thank you to those here in the audience and those joining at home. The third item of business on our agenda this evening is a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, we've got a reading of the minutes of the previous meetings, or previous meeting, which is attachment number one in your packets. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the report of the previous meeting?
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Alderperson Stack. Is there a second? Second by Kirk Patrick. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. opposed, nay. That passes. Next item on our agenda is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Item number five, those wishing to address the body may do so tonight on an item that's appearing on our agenda, at which point, if you wish to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand, in which the Alderperson will recognize you to come to the podium, in which you will have five minutes to speak on a matter. And following that, when you come to the podium, I should say, make sure you introduce yourself and state your name, your address, so we can indicate it for the minutes. Item number six this evening is my report. Good evening, Alderperson, city staff, and residents watching from home or here this evening. As with previous month's minutes and reports, I will highlight some of the many items that cross my desk or partake in following the last council meeting. Last Wednesday, we invited property owners and investors in the Central Business Waterfront District, as well as interested community members, to join in the first of renewed discussions related to the city's downtown waterfront district. Many of you here tonight were able to be present. Thank you for your attendance. As I stated at the meeting that evening, these are exciting times in Wisconsin Rapids, in large part due to the ongoing spirit and investments made by property owners and investors. The waterfront area has become prime for reinvestment and redevelopment. Thanks to a number of property sale transactions, a change in, or a change in or a conversion to local ownership affirms renewed interest in the district. Thanks to these past and recent investments, our city stands ready to make the heart of our community truly a centerpiece of which we all can be proud. Wednesday's meeting was an important step in fostering a dialogue around what the future holds for our Central Business District, and I hope it was the first in which community members, property owners, and investors continue the steps forward in reactivating our waterfront area. I look forward to the continued dialogue. Other items worth noting include the process that has begun for the review of the waterfront RFP design proposals. As was announced at the downtown waterfront discussion forum, we intend to build community input into that process as it moves forward and a consultant is selected. The DNR stewardship grant will be nearing the end of its completion for submission. As a reminder, we are, including all riverfront enhancements for funding consideration, are challenged river wall, the railing, the overlook, and the recreational trail into our application to the DNR. Finally, tonight you will consider a resolution on the commitment of Wisconsin Rapids to downtown revitalization efforts. As was mentioned at last week's forum, a strong local economy relies on the strength of all of its business districts and business parks. Key to this aspect of community development is the commitment of working with community partners, property owners, philanthropists, and philanthropic entities, and our citizens. The resolution doesn't make any formal pre-commitments, other than the calling for the establishment of a steering committee. Following hopeful passage, I will propose to this council representation and enabling legislation similar to that of other efforts for your consideration at our May meeting. Proclamations issued over the last month include National and Community Service Day on April 7th. The city of Wisconsin Rapids joined 1,700 municipalities to spotlight the impact of citizen involvement on the Third Annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Through public events and other activities, communities across the country highlighted how service by residents helps to solve local problems and challenges, making our community a better place to live. It was a chance to celebrate the value of citizen service, show support for nonprofit and national service groups, and inspire more residents to serve in our community. Secondly, National Volunteer Week, April 13th to April 17th. United Wake celebrated and kicked off National Volunteer Week last week with a breakfast recognizing those individuals and groups in our community who committed their time and energy to various service opportunities. National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to commit to volunteering opportunities in our community. Included in recognition this year was Sue Wesley, who as many of us know is involved in the Follymore Basket Program here with the city and the mayor's council on beautification, as well as Nick Kazuski, our student observer here, who was recognized for his efforts, volunteer efforts in the community, as well as involvement in the teen leadership program and the mayor's youth council. In closing, today marks my third year as your mayor. It is a privilege each day to serve the citizens of this great community toward a community that involves all residents in areas of their passion, enables city departments to improve their processes and operations, and to foster economic and community development to ensure a brighter future for all of our residents. And for that opportunity, I say thank you and look forward to serving the city over the next year. The next item on our agenda following my report is number seven, which is the report of the Planning Commission meeting held April 6th. However, I do have a request that item number 12 appear in the front, so I'm going to call for unanimous consent, and if there's any objections to moving item number 12, the ordinances, item A and item B, to the front of our agenda. Do I hear any objection? Hearing none, we'll proceed then with item 12. Item A is an ordinance amending parts of Chapter 46 of the municipal code entitled sign regulations. See attachment number three in your packets. And since Adam Tagan is not here this evening due to a training commitment he had, I can do my best to address questions that are related to the update of the sign ordinance. With that, I entertain a motion on item A.
Thank you. I guess, what, there's a couple of strikeouts and a couple of underlines in here, but what actually did we really change from the original to what we've got now?
Sure. So as you recall, a number of months ago, we passed the comprehensive update. These were some incremental updates that the Planning and Economic Development Department had questions on, one of which was on, let's see, item E, 46.51E, actually, I'm sorry, C. It was the construction. There was a piece in there that didn't clarify, no, actually, yeah, it's in, it's in C, but it's in 661, 4661, in which the strike through had amended it from 12 feet, from 20 feet to 12 feet in height, as well as .73, which you can see the strike through, and which is greater and not less. There were the other amendments, as you can see, though, those were the two that the Planning Commission concerned themselves with, but as you'll see in the other sections, there were, there were other amendments. So it says, section one amended as follows, section two amended as follows.
Okay, but it wasn't a complete rewrite?
We had already done that. These were incremental. In fact, it was at the March council meeting that we had the report, but the ordinance was not attached. So these are the edits to the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Kirk Patrick. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Alderperson Furkey. Alderperson Furkey, did I get all the items from our Planning Commission discussion? I believe it was pretty straightforward on, on that. Okay, thank you. Shane's asking you to hit the second button. Any further discussion? Seeing none, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero nays.
Thank you. The second item under ordinances is an ordinance regarding the mayor's youth council enabling legislation. And as a reminder, the mayor's youth council legislation came as a result of the formation of the mayor's youth council, which felt important that they codify some of the formation of the mayor's youth council. I commend the city attorney for working with the youth in drafting this legislation. The city clerk is on the advisory committee, as well as Alderperson Kellogg, in the formation of that. Our two student observers are also a part of the mayor's youth council. They were a part of, at least Cody was a part of, the legislative committee, which has put this forth. Cody, did you have any comments or anything? I think it's in final form. And then we've got three members of the mayor's youth council in the audience as well. If you wish, there are three, maybe four. If you wish, you can come to the podium and introduce yourselves. Give you that opportunity so that the council members can see who else is, who else is on the, on the mayor's youth council of 29. I think we're, we've got 29 members, 29, 30 members somewhere in there. And, and so make sure the microphone is on. So just state your name, what school you're from, and what grade you're from, what grade you're in.
My name is Ashley Kellonoffer, and I go to East Junior High. I'm a ninth grader, and that's it.
Okay.
I'm Emily Quenchus. I go to Assumption. I'm a junior.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Arndt. I go to East, and I'm a freshman.
Okay, thank you. And not to put you on the spot, but if you'd want to share any reason to why you joined the mayor's youth council, you certainly can. Otherwise, council members, I'd, now that they're at the podium, and we've got the other members here, any questions for the youth as they put forth their, their ordinance?
I think the youth council should go on for future generations, because I think it's important for younger generations to get input in saying what they want their city to be like for their children and for future generations to come.
Thank you. And the ordinance will, will certainly allow for that, provided future councils or others don't rescind it, provided it's passage here tonight. Any other questions? Alderperson Rayom, please. Okay. Anybody else have any thing they'd like to say? Okay. Alderperson Rayom, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few questions. How does somebody get on this? Is there a selection process? Is there a, I guess, who all makes the decision?
Sure.
Does it go through some committee that?
Correct.
Say there's 50 people that wanted to get on?
Sure. This year, we accepted all 30 that applied, or right around there. One, I believe, has dropped out. We're, we're just below 30 now. The advisory committee does meet to set kind of criteria. We realize that we can't accept 50, but in this situation, we prescribe 30. However, we encourage every one of the members to stay involved with a committee. So not to say they aren't invited to participate, they still will be invited to participate. They may not get a select, a spot on the formal council, which is the overarching group, if you will. So the advisory committee, as well as myself, or anybody that serves in the position in the future, would have the opportunity to, to refine or select who's on there. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Okay.
What would be some examples of what this group would take on to bring to the council?
Sure. Well, I won't speak exactly for what they've chosen, because they have not making their, made their final decision for this term of the council, but many of the projects they're considering, if anybody want to share some of the projects that, that you guys are considering, I know one of which is Alderperson Kellogg had put forth, actually at the last committee of the whole meeting, a potential project for youth to work on the Eighth Street Business District and partnering with businesses to, to work on the curb appeal in some cases.
And I'm part of the advisory to the Legislative Committee of the youth council. And one thing we're going to work on this month is guidelines for attendance, to make it rigorous, that it's just not joining this group, that you have to participate and participate in different programs. So I'm really impressed with the caliber of students that are participating, and actually the creative ideas they're coming up with. And then eventually, they'll take a vote as a group as to what they would like to accomplish, but it's a nice, it's a formal way of approaching it. And I think the common council will be impressed with the direction they're going in and the accomplishments that they'll make. They're a great group of kids.
And I think the recreational committee had just met with Parks and Rec to talk about some of the programmatic offerings they've got. So it's, from a formality standpoint or decision-making, it's very much informing, you know, giving input to certain departments, ultimately bringing projects back to the council, particularly in the case if financing or funds would be expended.
Excuse me. As they would be looking, going along a street to come up with things to make it look better, will the council committee be looking at it at the same time?
That's a good question. In fact, the Legislative Committee has, has made the decision, I think, and had the advisory committee as well, that this has to be a very instructive experience. So as they've attended some of the mayor's councils, the sustainability and beautification committees, they've been exposed to the kind of decision-making process. So the idea is to send everything through its normal approval channels, like we do with the common council process, so they don't have any outside authority in making the decisions. So the idea would be if they're creating suggestions, that the council would get a report. In fact, it was discussed, I believe, at the Legislative Committee, that the student observers, as the council starts meeting and it's got some time under its belt, that they would be putting a report to the, to the city council for their passage at the end of our meetings.
Thank you.
Do you want to maybe indicate which committee you're a part of? I'm assuming you're a part of Legislative, and I know a couple of you are, are all three in Legislative? Okay, great. And Nick, you're on Community Committee. Okay. So there, for those that are in the audience, there's three committees: legislation, recreation, and community. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a motion on the ordinance creating a mayor's youth council. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Kirk Patrick, and a second by Kellogg. Any further discussion? You can have a seat. I don't see anybody else wishing to speak. Thank you for, for being here, and this won't be the first, or the last time, I should say, that the council members will be seeing these, these fine youth. All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero nays.
Thank you. Now we'll move back into our regular order of business. Item number seven, report of the Planning Commission meeting held April 6th. The Planning Commission met at 5:00 PM on April 6th in the first floor conference room here at City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderperson Jim Stack and Adam Tagan. A list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. First order of business was the approval of the reports from March 2nd and March 16th Planning Commission meetings. There was a motion and a second to approve the reports, and that motion carried. There were no other maps or plots received. Item three was a public hearing on Plan 150114, Mary Beth Richardson, in which the applicant is requesting to allow a major home occupation within the R2, one-family and two-family residential district. The subject property is located at 611 Baker. Public hearing was open. Speaking in favor of the request was Mary Beth Richardson, the applicant. Anita Heinz, 541 Baker, was not in opposition, but had questions about the level of activity allowed within a home-based occupation and the potential disruption to the residential neighborhood. Adam Tagan presented the staff advisory report, which recommended approval of the request. It was noted that the request does not change the underlying zoning district, and if the business expanded, they wouldn't, they would need to relocate to a business location or a request rezoning of the property. No one spoke in opposition, and the public hearing was closed. Item four was action on Plan 150114 for Mary Beth Richardson, in which there was a motion and a second to approve, subject to the following conditions: the use shall comply with the standards outlined within the zoning ordinance as it pertains to major home occupations. Item two is signage for the use shall not exceed one wall sign, which is limited to two square feet. And item three is compliance with all other applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried. Item number five was a public hearing on Plan 150160. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from the R2, one-family and two-family district to the B3 exclusive office district, exclusive, yeah, exclusive office commercial district. The subject property is located at 540 Pepper. The public hearing was open. Speaking in favor was Mike Ryjewski, Lori Guile, Lois Johnson, Alderperson Jim Stack, and Fran Aaron. Comments were made about the mix of existing businesses and residential on Pepper Avenue corridor west of Eighth Street. Adam Tegan presented the staff recommendation, noting that the request is not in accordance with the comprehensive plan and recommended denial. In addition, the B3 zoning district does not allow any conditions to be applied to that property. Speaking in opposition to the request was myself and Joe Aixton, and the public hearing was closed. Item number six was plan, was action on Plan 150160. Motion by Aaron and second by Furkey to approve the plan. Motion carried with a 4-2-1 vote. Drew Wink and Aixton voted in the negative, with Burke Hauser abstaining. Item seven was Adam Tegan giving an update on the various waterfront planning efforts going on within the city. Item eight was a motion to adjourn at 5:40 PM, and that motion carried. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding the report of the Planning Commission meeting?
I'd like to look at number six before it's settled.
Item number six is a request to hold that item out, which is the action on Plan 150160, with the remaining, the balance of the report, with the exception of item number six.
Your Honor, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Number five deals with that, and it may be, I have that along with it.
So we'll pull out item five and six.
We have to refer back to it.
Thank you. Kirk Patrick was at a, oh, I'm, okay. Alderperson Stack was at a motion?
Okay.
We've got a motion by Alderperson Stack to approve the report and a second. Move into discussion. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. And I don't know, maybe I should hold out this other item as well, because I think it kind of, to me, looking at item three, four, and then looking at item five, six, I'm a little confused, because they seem very similar to me in some respects here.
So I, I know both applicants are here tonight, right? Mary Beth, I see you, yep, and the other party is here as well. So if, if.
Oh, let's, if we're going to hold out the other ones, let's hold out items, I guess, three, four, or do we just need it held out on action on four?
Well, we really only have the two actions, so we could approve one action in the report, and then move on to the other one that's been held out. Or? You want to hold it out?
I want to hold it out for, for the discussion.
Okay, so item three and four will hold out?
Yeah, thank you.
So we've got items one, two, seven, and eight remaining in the balance of the report. Any further discussion on what remains? Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had spoken with Adam about the two requests and how they differed, and one thing that he pointed out, and I understand now, is that the request for Mary Beth Richardson is within a home setting where she will be living. So this becomes a major home occupation.
Right.
The second request for Mike, that is a, a sale of a property to another party, where it will become an office, in this case, an insurance office. So it will not be a major home occupation. Therefore, the, the request included the changing to a B3. That would be an appropriate business, business zoning for that property. And that is why you see the two differences. One is where the person is occupying the home and working in the home. The second is where a home is becoming an office, where there will be people there during business hours, but gone from it during the other times of the day.
And maybe two minor pieces to add. Jim was, was right on. The one, the first one, the Richardson request, is for activities related to non-transactional activities. So there wouldn't be the transactional, you know, the visitors and business, business patrons there in and out. She's operating in her home. The second one is, is very different in that it is a conversion of a single-family home to a business premises. So that's why the change in zoning in the request. Those are just two minor pieces I would add. Any further?
I appreciate it.
Discussion, Alderperson Rayom on the balance of the report?
Uh, I'm, 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 uh, there is a big difference in the request of what, it is a rezoning against, like, the rezoning is that then it's an office now, and the next year it could be empty, because that falls under a different rule. Make your home occupation. If that changes, and we have to go here to get right wording, we have to go back and get approval again.
That's great.
So the second one is a rezoning to B3. So, I'm not in favor of that. So, that's, I think, maybe.
Alderperson Kellogg, you're next.
Well, I noticed that you voted against it, and so did Joe. And I like to have, I mean, when you have a 4-2-1 vote, what's the explanation of why you recommended that it wouldn't be approved?
Sure. So I'll let Joe go first, and I'd be happy to, to share my reasons, if Joe wants to elaborate.
Mainly, it went along with the staff recommendation of not following the comprehensive plan, and, and kind of what Tom had stated, is that you do lose that control with the rezoning. I mean, it'll be there. There's, there's no conditions that you can apply to it after that.
And, and my reasons were, I very strongly feel that our business districts have a tremendous amount of vacant office space in them. The applicant was very much desiring to convert a typical, single-family home in the city to an office. And it doesn't look like it. It doesn't represent it. The parking is very minimal. The second reason is, and so I feel that, that there's plenty of options available for, for the business space, the business to be operated in. Second reason is, there's this creep that exists, and I know Pepper is, there's already some, some other examples and precedents there. However, I don't see precedence in the form of a true, single-family home being converted. However, I don't see precedence in the form of a true, single-family home being converted for office use. So in its current form, I struggle with allowing that creep to occur in neighborhoods when, in fact, there are the business districts, such as A Street, or you name many other ones, where there's office space that can house a business. So those are the reasons, and it very much echoes the concern about the zoning. And this is a forever commitment. We've rezoned it, and we have, we have no control long-term over what businesses might be occupying that space.
Yeah, I have, I really have a concern. Either we have a comprehensive plan along A Street or corridors that we have, or we don't. I mean, if we don't, if we're not, if we're going to make exceptions, then let's not have a comprehensive plan. And it'll be helter-skelter of businesses down side streets and so forth. I do appreciate the owner of that property, because I've driven past that. I was torn, you know, one way or the other, and I appreciate, that house may have been, and I don't know, on up for sale for a number of years, and this is their chance to sell it. But then, once you sell it for an insurance company, I believe that's what it's designated, then maybe two years from now, it won't be. And maybe that property then wouldn't be as conducive to the neighborhood of others. You also have a piece of property right next door to that one. So if you approve this one in this, for this particular zoning, well, next year, what happens if the next, the house right next door on the same block comes back to the common council? There is, there are property, there's homes on A Street that have been for sale for, that could be repurposed. There's business spaces that could be, that are vacant on A Street. You have some on West Grand and East Grand. And so all of a sudden, we're going, we have a comprehensive plan, and we're going to come up with an exception for the comprehensive plan. Well, is this, is this a slippery slope? So that we continue to come up with exceptions? I'd like to stick to the comprehensive plan. With some, I'm sure with comprehensive plans, there might be some unique circumstances in the future. But in this particular case, knowing that there are vacancies on A Street and Grand Avenue, there are homes that are on sale for, on A Street that could be repurposed, why are we encroaching in residential areas? And if it's because a home's been up for sale for a number of years, I'm telling you, I know a lot of homes that have been up for sale for a number of years, and is that the criteria of redoing it? So mine is the big picture of a comprehensive plan, not necessarily this particular land, this owner of this property. Either we stick to it, or we don't stick to it. So I'm not going to be voting in favor of it.
Alderperson Furkey, you're next on our list.
By changing the zoning to B3 does not necessarily mean we have no control over what goes into that building. It is, there are, with the B3 zoning, if I'm understanding it correctly, it is office space. So as far as it going to some type of a production facility or whatever, that would not be the case. Pepper Avenue, like Baker Street, like A Street, like Grand Avenue, are all commercial corridors in my mind. Pepper Avenue is littered from Lincoln High School to the golf courses with commercial properties. There's Becker Vision, there's taverns, there's homes that were converted to wine tasting Sunrise Bar was a home. Reeves Greenhouse from east to west. Pepper Avenue is a different animal than Two Mile or Airport. And as far as the lack of parking, to the east of the home that's there now, that garage to the south of that, that area was promised to be used for parking, additional parking. The reason that home has been on the market for a year or two is because of its location to the tavern. Nobody wants to own a home next to a tavern. So I think if we continue to discourage businesses, and I realize A Street does have empty properties, and West Grand Avenue and East Grand Avenue has empty properties, but at some point, we're going to run out of A Street, and we're going to run out of Grand Avenue, and we're hampering the expansion of business opportunities in Wisconsin Rapids by saying, you can't build here because we don't want you here. This is not, you know, a house of ill repute or something like that. It's an insurance agency. So I think it can be looked at in a little bit better light than maybe what's being shown on it right now. And I think talking with the current owner and the prospective owner, I do get a fairly good feel for their actions and what they want to accomplish. A Street properties are quite a bit more expensive than this particular property, and having ownership in your own building, I can say firsthand, it's a much better situation to be in than paying the rent that you might find on A Street. And the traffic on Pepper is a lot more busier than what you see on Airport or what you see on Two Mile. And that is why, in the past, it has been used as commercial properties. Going to the golf course, going to Nikusa from Wisconsin Rapids, that Pepper Avenue is a corridor that's very heavily traveled. And I think you will see down the road that there will be more commercial businesses there, or at least requests to go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Stack, you're next.
Thank you, your honor. Looking at this, when it was brought to the planning commission, I had discussions with Mike about what they did plan to do, and so on and so forth. And I'd like to second what Alderman Furkey said. These are all things, what he said, are all things which I would agree with and support. Another item, and you can be correct in that there are homes that will sit for sale in the community and may not sell, for whatever reason. Here, we have one that is for sale. There is a buyer, prospective buyer for it, and one of the reasons that it has not sold is its location being across from the bar and some other businesses. The family that was there, was there at a time when it was a different environment. I'm not saying the environment has changed for the bad, because the bar has been there forever. It was Georgia's years ago, and so on and so forth. But because of its location and where it is, another family has chosen not to move into there during the period of time the property was open for sale. So now, we have an opportunity to take an existing parcel within our community. We'll have an upgrade, we'll improve it, and then we'll have an active business within it, people carrying on business. I see that as a plus for this corner at this time, because of the fact that it has sat for such a while, and adjacent to it and close to it are other businesses. For CBS, a couple of years ago, we moved Gray's Auto across the street to Seventh Street. That allowed CBS to come in. We have, we have need to encourage people who have a desire to build and to start a business to do so. The properties that you spoke of, I did speak with Mike, and other things are just not doable for them at this time. This is something they can do, and they can make work for them. I think everyone would recognize that the price along A Street or other areas would probably be prohibitive in some ways. So to say that I can use a house on Eighth or another area would be prohibitive. Here, we give people an opportunity to start their business and grow their business. As a, as an insurance business, it's not going to be an active business in the sense that it's going to be like seven, seven days a week, 24 hours, they'll have their set hours, business hours, typical business hours, 8:00 to 4:30, something like that. It will improve, I know that Mike has spoken about the improvements that will be necessary for the structure and for the lot. I do not see it as being a down, down activity for that property. And I understand your position about the B3, and I, when I talked with Adam about this, I said, you know, why, why the yes and why the no? And he explained it to me. And I looked at the property, because I go buy it often. I see this as being a good use, and so I would request the council members to vote in favor of this one request today, and for Mary Beth as well. Thank you.
Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're next.
Thank you. And the last thing I want to do here is stifle this discussion, but I think we've got a motion already set for the balance of the report, and I'd like to, if we could push forward with that and then come back to the two points of discussion, I think that would probably be more in order.
Thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, call for a vote. Please cast your ballots. This is on the balance of the reports. Alderperson Stack, please. On items one, two, and seven and eight.
Okay, thank you.
Eight A's and zero N's.
Okay, we'll move in order of items. Item three and item four. Item three and four are related to the request on the major home occupation requested by Mary Beth Richardson. Again, both the applicants are in the room in case folks wish to recognize them. Alderperson Kirkpatrick.
I'd be willing to entertain going to the other item first, if that met with everyone else's approval, since that's where the discussion has already kind of been headed, would be item five, six.
So you don't want to deal with three and four, if it was?
I'd like to discuss it yet, but I, I mean, everybody's kind of got item five, six on their tongue.
Okay. Anybody object to that request? All right, we'll move into item five and six, which is the public hearing on the rezoning from one and two-family residential R2 to the B3 exclusive office district commercial. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're first.
Thank you. You guys are both very, very convincing. I mean, you're both making extraordinary.
Pull it out of the hat.
Extraordinary points here about the thing, but I mean, it's, we'd be, we'd be improving a property. We'd be putting it to a good use, but we've got this question of, what about future planning? Somebody comes forward in a year or two and buys up a couple surrounding properties, and they request a zoning change, and now we've got more zoning change in there, and now we've got, you know, another large, I'm not saying an industrial thing, but we're pushing the, pushing the business corridor further down into a residential zone. And I get that we've got, you know, Becker Vision and Ebsen Green, not Ebsen Greenhouse, there's a greenhouse down there, Reeves, you know, and a few other odds and ends down there. I never personally thought, they'd kind of been there forever, and I never really understood one, why they were there, and never really felt that they belonged in those areas. I mean, when did that section of town, I'm assuming that section of town annexed in from Grand Rapids at some point in the past? Late 60s?
Late 60s.
So were those established in that area at that time, the greenhouse, and maybe not Becker Vision, but some of these other locations that are businesses?
That's correct. With the annexation that took place in the late 60s, areas from the, well, what is now the Expressway, which used to be the railroad tracks, down to Two Mile Avenue took place. So those properties which were there were, of course, grandfathered in based on existing purposes. And so that is why you have that mix in that area. Many of us might remember Forestool Short being on Strode Man, and that used to be a problem in that area. And then, one night, it kind of blew up, and it was no longer a problem, because it was more than 50% destroyed. So that is the reason for these changes that you see within the area bounded from the Expressway down to Two Mile, is they were grandfathered in under existing rules at that time, when the areas were, different areas were annexed.
Sure, thank you. And Mayor, I think you kind of articulated some of my concerns quite well with, with the encroachment upon further residential areas by, you know, business zoning. And I personally don't know that that's something that we should really be going on with when we've got a comprehensive plan that states what and where. And as you said, you know, there are many parcels throughout the city that would be more in line with this request. And I get that, you know, there's, there's a need for a certain price point, you know, that this is more doable. But I just don't know that that necessarily can outweigh a zoning change, moving a business corridor further into a residential zone, when we've already established an Eighth Street business corridor, when we've already established, you know, our downtown sector, when we've established our West Grand Avenue sector, and when we already have trouble getting those locations used to their fullest extent. And when we are, you know, I mean, we're going to look at tonight, going back here, a resolution to commit to downtown revitalization efforts. So trying to get more people, more businesses into the downtown, and now we're, we're saying, but it's okay to allow a business to go into a residential area and change a zoning to, you know, to do exactly the opposite of what we're being asked to commit to in the next item. So I think I'm kind of on the same point, that this is not the right development, the right type of development for the, the request isn't wrong, it's just not the right development for this parcel property.
Alderperson Furkey, you're next.
I think if you, if you want to draw a line in the sand or a line in the asphalt, that's fine. There's businesses that are directly to the east, there's businesses directly to the north, and there's also businesses directly to the northwest. I mean, they're all there already. This is not encroaching further west than what we have already, okay? Brown's Autobody, that's further, further west than the Sunrise. So if you say you don't want Pepper to be developed as a commercial area, then what are we going to do with these businesses that are there? I mean, again, if you want to, if you want to say, hold fast to a line in the, line in the asphalt, great, but then put it where the businesses that are there now stop. Don't put it to the east of there. Thank you.
Is there any further requests to speak? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, looks like you're back up.
And I appreciate that. The only thing, the only thing I would say is, and I can't speak to Brown's, because I don't know exactly when he got his going there, but, I mean, all these other ones, they were grandfathered in, because they were existing when those parcels came into the city. So there's nothing that we can do about that. We didn't have any control over. This is, this is a city parcel that we have the authority and the ability to say, this is inappropriate, or this is not correct for this space. Whereas, when those other areas came into the city, Grand Rapids or wherever we got, I'm assuming it's Grand Rapids, because that section is over there by the airport, they likely did not have anything like that to govern their zoning in such a way, or they allowed it just because it was. or they allowed it just because it was whatever, wherever, and, and they didn't care at the time. But I, I think, you know, when you're talking about residential areas, when you're talking about business areas, you're talking about industrial areas, I think we do have to draw a line in the sand and a line in the asphalt, however you want to state it. And when it's a parcel that's within the city and we've got control over it, that's, that's up to us then at that point to do that and make that. We, we can't do anything about what's been there, what we were saddled with when it came in. That's, I can't call it black and white because it's not, it's, it's a gray area, but there's nothing we can do with that. That's out of our control unless somebody were to buy that property and it would change hands and they would request a zoning change. Then again, we're, then we've got control over it again. We can make that determination then, just like we can make that determination tonight, if this is correct for this area or if this is something that belongs somewhere else.
We've got a member of the audience that wishes to address the body. Does somebody want to yield their time?
I will.
Alderperson Ferkie, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lois Johnson. I'm the current owner of the property. I've known this property my whole life. My parents owned it, and in 2004, my mother put it up for sale. We had a very hard time trying to sell it, the comments were, because of the bar. At that time, the assisted living was not there. The Hilltop Living was on Seventh Street only. I decided to purchase the property and I've been the owner for the last 10 years. When you talk about having the properties end on Seventh Street, when Hilltop expanded, it expanded to across from my driveway. What we never realized in that expansion, we did make sure that they had parking, was that the parking across the street would be accessed 24/7. So there's a lot of traffic in and out that literally shines into my kitchen and bedroom windows. So it really is like commercial directly, it's not just the bar, it's the Hilltop Assisted Living Parking Lot. So never really realized that impact until really they were there. So that has made a very big change in quality of life for it being a home, because it's directly across from the kitchen and the primary bedroom. So that's one reason why I think this is a very good idea. The other thing is the bar, I grew up with that all my, all my life, but the Hilltop did come in quite a bit later. It's come in, you know, since, I'm trying to think of when the first one, but the expansion was not that long ago. And there are businesses, there is a great deal of traffic. It is very much of thoroughfare in Wisconsin Rapids. Most people use it to cut through. At the April 6th meeting, there was a little bit of talk about how Baker Drive was zoned mixed use and that perhaps that, I'm not sure if I have this wording right, and if I have this incorrect, please tell me, that perhaps the planning commission needs to look at Pepper Avenue being zoned mixed use because it is mixed use, you know, from one end to the other. At one point, they did a counter on the road and there was over 5,000 cars a day, and that was quite some time ago. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I see this as a very good use for a property that right now is not as conducive to a living space because of all the businesses. And I was very much in favor of grays moving, but they did get much larger and they work much later. It used to be a, pretty much a Monday through Friday. They now work into, well into seven in the evening, and often on Saturdays and Sundays, it's the same. It's much louder than it ever used to be. Perhaps that's the reflection of the noise off of the back of the hardware store, but it's very much louder than it ever was before. And there's much more traffic over there, the visual of seeing all the cars over there, all those type of things. It makes what was my family home and my home, my own home, not as good of quality of living. I think a business would be a perfect, a perfect place for that, and because it is this specific B three, not anything can go in there, so you do have control. Thank you for listening, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I'd entertain a motion on the balance. Is there somebody else?
I'm Mike Grageski, I'm the potential buyer. I do have an offer that has accepted contingent on this rezoning. One thing I would like to add to all these comments would be that this business being a B three, I think would be an awesome buffer between the residential and this commercial like grays and the tavern across the street. I think it would actually help the neighborhood. You're going, we're going to have a business that's going to be operating from eight to four thirty Monday through Friday, and that's it. You're not going to have the traffic there. We're going to do major renovations to the, the place, make it, you know, more up-to-date siding and all that stuff, make it visually better for the, for the neighborhood too. So that's just what I wanted to add to it. So, thanks.
Seeing no further requests to speak, I'd entertain a motion on the balance of the report.
I'd move to approve.
Now, this is five and six. Shane, Shane had indicated that we wanted to, that's right, I'm sorry, Shane, Andrew had asked for five and six, so Jim, repeat your motion, please, on five and six.
I, I would move to approve the applicant's request.
Is there a second?
And the action, I would move to-
Plan and, the public hearing, the action.
And to approve the action.
Thank you. We have a motion by Stack, second by Dolan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. I'm sorry, this is just on five and six, correct, just five and six.
Motion carried, five A's and three N's.
All right, thank you. We'll move into the balance of the report, which is item three and item four. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding items three and four?
Move to approve, pardon me, move to approve?
We have a motion by Stack to approve. Is there a second? Second by Ferkie. Any discussion? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're first.
Thank you. This one, I guess I don't really know what, it just says major home occupation, and I, you know, I mean, the third, still residing, still living in the, in the property, okay? I mean, what, what is the nature of this enterprise?
Gluten-free pizza crust.
Gluten-free, yeah.
Okay.
Mary Beth, did I state that accurately? Are there any other activities outside of your pizza crust making business? Okay.
Okay. And now, I mean, since that's going to be, that's sort of a manufacturing, sort of a thing if you-
She can, you know, come forward at small scale, she's not taking deliveries at the location. Mary Beth, please.
Would you repeat that?
I mean, you're going to be manufacturing something of some sort to be shipped, packaged and shipped out, packaged on site, shipped out from there? Okay. I guess that kind of brings up the question of waste for trash pickup? And we've got that question kind of floating around with the, the assisted living facilities and the multi-assisted living facilities about the amount of waste that they generate versus a standard residence. And is that, is this going to greatly impact that where, are you going to have, you know, three more cans of garbage each week because of, because of this? Where you would then kind of fall within that home-based operation?
No, it shouldn't affect that at all. Basically, it would be cardboard that would be left over, that would be recycled.
Okay.
And if it was more than what should go out on the curb, then I would, we would do the recycling or take it to a recycling center.
Okay. And I think, Jim, you, I had held the thing out before you had kind of given me that explanation earlier, so I appreciate that clarification between the two different ones here. So I guess that's just kind of the only question I had.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve item three and four. Please cast your ballot, Shane's ready.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Thank you. Item eight, under new business, item A is a resolution to commit to downtown revitalization efforts in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, see attachment number two. Adam is also not present for this item. This is in response, as I indicated in my report, to a desire or consideration ultimately for the city to consider an application into the Connect Communities Program. The state has reached out on a number of occasions, our community account manager, to consider an application into the program. It's a precursor to the Main Street program, in which it provides municipalities technical assistance for efforts on, on main traditional business districts, such as our downtown. As I mentioned in my, my note, there is, as you can read, it, it's simply a resolution, and I entertain questions to the extent that I can answer them on the resolution. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're first.
Thank you. How many projects have we done in the downtown area since 1995, 1996 that have stemmed directly out of the 96, 2007 downtown plans or the 2009 downtown waterfront plan?
Like a num, you're looking for a number?
Yeah.
Adam did a review just recently of the, of the plans. I mean, it's safe to say, thinking in the last maybe close to a dozen of various aspects of it, whether they were city-led or outside of city. I know Alderperson Dolan was a part of the kayak launches, leadership project long, some time ago. I mean, I would say a dozen, at least, maybe even more than a dozen if I'm thinking outside of city participation.
Okay. Do we have any idea how many different project ideas there were in total within all of those different plans?
The 2007 was the TID plan, and that was the most prescriptive. There was the fewest in there. Again, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I'm not sure the number. I mean, it's, it's a planning document, like a comprehensive plan is, it's adopted to kind of guide decision-making as it's, as it goes along.
The thing that always concerns me is, I mean, we've always got these great documents that we spend a considerable amount of time and effort on, we spend a considerable amount of money on, and, you know, I mean, I guess I'm surprised to hear that we've done a dozen, to be honest with you, over the years. That number to me always seemed like it was a lot smaller. We always talk about referencing the plans, we always talk about pulling them off the shelf and dusting them off, and I'm always concerned that we're not doing that for one, or that two, you know, there's, when we do go ahead and, and get some broad support behind one, it ends up becoming this miserably contentious issue that the city gets threatened to be sued if we go forward with, when it's something that would be a great use of space. So, I mean, I'm not saying that I'm not favoring, you know, a plan, but, I mean, we have to be careful about saying, well, we've got this plan, we've got, pretty soon we're going to have a whole box full of plans and we're not going to have but, you know, a dozen, a dozen and a half items out of 100 that we've actually gone through with, because I don't know if it's a lack of, a lack of foresight or a lack of resolve to carry them out, to go through with them, a lack of resources to carry them out and go forward with them. I, I think it's great to have, to have a plan and to have a direction, but I just don't feel like we've ever really fully realized one, and we keep on re-updating the plan, that's fine, but we're not really ever seeing one through to completion. So I'm, I'm not saying I don't favor it, I think I do favor it, but I would just caution, you know, maybe not next year, maybe not the year after, but five, 10 years down the line, because it's, this is something that looks like we do about every 10 years. I think we really need to, to push harder to make these plans happen than we have in the past.
So if I may, I'd be happy to respond or maybe further clarify. The resolution prescribes a creation of a steering committee. It's very much emulates the past downtown revitalization committee that had been in existence up until early 2000, mid 2012. The group, I guess, I would ask for trust in the sense that this group of individuals will have to be assembled who are, I mean, a mixture of those that truly have the strongest amount of influence in the community, right? Those that own a tremendous amount of property, those that have a tremendous amount of resources, financial and otherwise, as well as those have a vested interest, such as representatives of the Tavern League, for example, who represent probably the lion's share of the number of, you know, personal, I mean, retail establishments in the downtown. So this isn't a recommitment for another plan, this is a review of past plans. And as was sort of the takeaway out of that downtown planning meeting in terms of feedback from people in the room that attended, was very much that Rapids lacks, again, the, the implementation or the action body that will, that's an extension of this group. So it's not meant to usurp any power that's given to the council, but we don't have an active body that meets to go through the plan, to ferret out requests and send them to the council. So I hear you 100%, everything you've said, I, I can't disagree. Really, I don't think with any of it, other than just to clarify that this is very much kind of doubling down on, on what we've done and the investments we've already made to partner with those, as it says, those entities in the community who, who have a really strong interest in advancing what's in the plan. You know, the plans are a lot of geometric shapes on maps and different parcels throughout the downtown, but there are strategic decisions that need to be made regarding programming, that it's great, we've got a leadership project that wants to put improvements into a park, but if we don't have the programmatic aspects of that, those things are just left to sit there. And so this body would, as it's dubbed, the steering, and I'm happy to call it anything we want, but the steering committee, which will be assembled, and I would propose at the next council meeting, a list of members and the representation, and then ask all of you, what level of comfort do you have in giving them authority, if any? And maybe there's no authority and they have to come back to everything, but, to the council for everything. But this is really the, I guess, another foundational step to moving in a direction that pulls those plans truly into implementation. And then hearing staff speak, one of the biggest frustrations is, we don't have a passionate, active body of residents currently, and not just residents, but representatives of organizations meeting to implement the aspects that are recommended for approval. And I think it's, it's, it's easy to point out the number of most recent property acquisitions and some of the recent lease signings and others that have occurred in the downtown that, you know, there's, there's strong interest, but the city needs to be leading and convening the discussion. And the hope is that the steering team will, will obviously work at the council's will and bring, bring forth those recommendations. So those are my comments, and hopefully that clarified what this is kind of requesting.
It does, and that, that alleviates, you know, alleviates a lot of my concerns that I was having about that, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Rayo, you're next.
Thank you. I'm going to support it. I, I guess it just, I don't know what, I think, Andrew, you said about suing the city? And I, that's for another day, I guess, maybe, but I, I don't foresee that, I, right now, I don't foresee that on the horizon. With, with this committee, or whatever they're going to be called, they have to keep in mind, I mean, if there's the intent of huge amounts of money from the city coming forward, I don't know that, that would be true. So city's involvement, encouragement, if there's possible things we can do to bring, you know, suggest them, see if we want to, but just so this doesn't turn into, for me anyway, into the city paying the whole freight, or, you know, the majority of it, so.
Yep, thank you. Good, I mean, good comments, and I think the message is, if in fact people are close enough and passionate about it enough, they will assist in finding financial resources. And I think, I think that is duly noted for me. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the resolution. Shane's going to, we got a motion to Kirkpatrick. Shane's going to get the system caught up for us here. Motion to approve by Kirkpatrick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Kellogg. At least that's the way the system caught it, Jim. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Alderperson Kirk, there we go.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Interference maybe in the remotes. Item nine, reports from the Finance and Property Committee meetings held April 7th, as well as April 20th, and the meeting that was previously scheduled and canceled for the 21st. Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall, also attending were those listed. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, an application for a Class B liquor and beer license filed by Leila's Incorporated, Leila Tracy Agent, doing business as Leila's Pub and Grill located at 2962 State Highway 73. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan to approve the application, motion carried. Item three, by the way, welcome to those at home. Item three, a request for Krista Coon, Heart of Wisconsin Business Alliance, for approval of a special events application for Lunch by the River, beginning June 11th, and held each Thursday from 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM through August 27th, to include vending and closure of parking stalls on the west side of Second Street North during Lunch by the River. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the special events application, including vending and the closure of the parking stalls, motion carried. Item four, a request from Krista Coon, Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, and Laura Nelson, Visitors and Convention Bureau, for approval of a special events application for Cranberry Blossom Fest, June 18th to 21st, to include street closures of Grand Avenue, suspension of open container ordinance, street closures on June 21st, a carnival on June 19th, 20th, and 21st. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the special events application, including street closures for Cinema Under the Stars, suspension of the open container ordinance, the street closures for the parade, and the carnival, motion carried. Item five, a request from John Corrigo, of Renaissance Learning Incorporated, for approval of a special events application for the June 13th Renaissance Learning Race Against Cancer from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, to include street closures, and a request that Chestnut Street and 23rd be controlled by officers and de-vending. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the special events application, including the street closures and vending, motion carried. Item six, a request from Amber Crone, Aqua Skiers Incorporated, for approval of a special events application for the July 4th Street Dance from 8:00 AM on July 4th to 12:00 AM on July 5th, to include a special beer license, street closures, suspension of the open container ordinance, and vending. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the special events application, including the special beer license, street closures, suspension for the open container ordinance, and vending, motion carried. Item seven, a request from Lorna Holwinski, Assumption Catholic High School, for approval of a special events application for May 15th, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, for a music concert May 16th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, for a run-walk, and May 17th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, for the Royal Event, to include special beer license application, the fun-run-walk route, street closures, and vending. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the special events application, including the special beer license, fun-run-walk route, street closures, and vending, motion carried. A request from John Fanta, Wisconsin Rapids Rafter's LLC, for approval of a special events application for August 8th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, for Race Across the Wisconsin. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the application, motion carried. Item nine, review and consider adoption of the city's fund balance policy. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Whirl, to adopt the fund balance policy, motion carried. If there would be any questions, I would refer them to Tim DeSorci, our financial, our city finance officer. Eleven, renewal application for six-month Class B licenses filed by the Wisconsin Rapids Men's Softball Association, John Undermark Agent, doing business as Wisconsin Rapids Men's Softball for the premises located at Mead Field. Wisconsin Rapids Women's Softball Association, Jamie McDonald Agent, doing business as Wisconsin Rapids Women's Softball for the premises located at Mead Field. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the six-month Class B license, motion carried. Item 12, consider a wage adjustment for the GIS specialist position as recommended by the Human Resources Committee. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Whirl, to approve a wage adjustment for the GIS specialist from a pay grade eight to a grade 12, motion carried. Beverage operator license applications, it was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve the licenses applied for and shown in the minutes. Item B, it was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to renew a license for Laura Hart, motion carried. Item C, there were no beverage operator applications recommended, denied by the Police Department. Item 14, audit of the bills. The committee audited the bills. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Whirl, to approve voucher number 58818 of 312014 through voucher 59135 of 3312014, and I think they should be 15, correct? So, they should be 15, not 14, and to recommend payment, motion carried. Item 15A, in open session, it was moved by Dolan, seconded by Whirl, to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Paren 1, Parn E of the Wisconsin statutes. B, in closed session, the committee discussed with city staff the strategy and negotiation parameters to be used in the acquisition of certain property for development. Item 15C, the committee returned to open session, and no action was taken. Item 16, it was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to adjourn, motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 6:16 PM, James Stack Chairman, Terry Dolan Secretary. That is report number one. Now, report number two is from a meeting at the Finance and Property Committee held last night. Take me a moment to find, there we go. Okay. The date of meeting was April 20th, 2015, report number two reported to the council today, April 21st. Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Monday, April 20th, 2015, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Also attending were Andrew Kirkpatrick, Jim Borski, Sue Schill, Matt Heideman, Todd Furkey, and Tom Rayom. The meeting was called to order. Item two, a request for contribution towards the purchase of seasonal banners for the downtown area. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve a contribution of $4,500 from the property outlay fund towards the purchase of banners, motion carried. Now, item three is, in open session, it was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Paren 1, Parn E of the Wisconsin statutes, motion carried unanimously. Three B, in closed session, the committee conducted interviews with general contractors and discussed proposals for the repair of hail damage to city buildings. Now, here, we have a slight change based on discussion afterwards, and this includes Attorney Schill. Now, in the notes that were presented, you'll see that it says it was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to return to open session, motion carried. And D, it was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan, to approve JG House Construction for the project pending successful reference check. We agree that there might be some thoughts that we would have overnight, but we didn't feel it would be enough to reconvene the Finance Committee again this evening. Afterwards, and I received an email from Attorney Schill, who asked if we might amend the motion, so that the motion will read, and I will be the, I will make the motion and ask the committee member for a second. Motion by Stack, seconded by, to direct the city attorney and city staff to commence negotiations with JG House Construction Incorporated for a contract for the hailstorm repairs, and to have the mayor execute a contract with JG House Construction Incorporated, if terms of the contract are reached, which are acceptable to the city attorney and staff. One of the things that we have to point out to those at home and other council members who were not able to attend last night, is that this is, we're looking at work to be done for the hail damage which occurred last July 14. I'd specifically like to thank Jim Borski and Matt Heideman for being there last night to help us in our discussions as we went through different things, and for the other aldermen who were able to be present for their influence. It gave us a good opportunity to see what was being presented and what was discussed and needed to be done for the different buildings. As you may know, different buildings will require different repairs, and there are different roofs and styles that will need to be done. So at this point, I am making the motion as I stated, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to...
No, this would be, this would be for this report last night, and the changes that we are needing to make.
So, you should make a motion to approve the report, and then a motion...
And then we, we will hold out Report Two for a separate action.
Thank you.
And then come back to Report One for its approval of the council.
So you'd like to act on Report Two first, you're holding out Report One.
What I want to do is note the change to the minutes, so that we have those on file, and then if there are any questions, let's go back and we'll do, see, the first part only needs the committee action, okay? On Report Two, the change is committee material. So I have a motion and a second to approve the change that we made in the motion at the end of last night's meeting. So that is, that's complete that second meeting's business. So we're not, we're not looking at this point to approve the committee's action of last night, only that the committee itself is saying, this is what we are presenting to the council tonight.
I'm hearing from the clerk and the attorney that we're going to want to hold out Report Number Two, and then we'll go back to Two.
That'll be fine.
So, accomplish the same thing, but just so...
Little different order.
Hearing from...
Yep. That's fine.
That's the appropriate step.
So, at this point, then, I would move for approval of Report Number One, as presented to the council this evening.
Is there a second on Report Number One? Alderperson Kellogg, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to approve Report Number One. Alderperson Rayom, you're first.
Not on one.
Not on one, okay, so withdrawn. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on Report Number One? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots to approve...
You had the right time, don't you?
Approve the first report.
Hit your vote again. There you go.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
So we'll move into Report Number Two, there are two items on Report Number Two...
Correct.
For action. Alderperson Stack?
Again, with Report Number Two, we have the request for contributions towards the purchase of seasonal banners for the downtown area, and then also on Report Two, the change in the motion that this committee wishes to present to the council this evening, is that the city attorney and staff will commence negotiations.
Okay.
You can do that.
All right.
Okay, so you want...
Jim's up, Jim's good with that. So, Jim's motion is to approve...
Item Two.
Item Two on the report.
Then come back to Item Three.
Thank you. Is there a second on Item Number Two, to approve? And a second by Whirl, motion by Stack, seconded by Whirl, to approve Item Number Two on the report, the second report? Any further discussion on Item Number Two on the second report? Alderperson Rayom? Are you going to move on, speaking on Number Three? Number Three on Number Two, thank you. Okay. No further discussion, please cast your ballots.
I wonder...
All right, motion on that is, or motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Moving to Item Number Three, the balance of that report. Alderperson Stack, please give us your wishes of the amendment you'd like to make to the report. I'm assuming you want to approve it with an amendment.
I do want to approve Item Number Three of Report Number Two with the motion that was made, that the city attorney and staff will commence negotiations on the contract for the hailstorm repairs, and to have you, mayor, execute a contract with JG House Construction Incorporated, if terms of the contract are reached, which are acceptable to the city attorney and staff. That was a good meeting we had last night. We did about two and a half hours. As I said, Mr. Furkey was there, Mr. Kirkpatrick was there for a part of it. Who else? Who else? Tom, Tom was sitting there. I had so many names going through my head last night, they laughed at it. I even had Chad Whirl ask me if I'd had, you know, I had four kids, and if I had more, and he thought I said four beers, but, so, the, we sat with the different people, we had six people come in, good discussion, again, thanks to Jim Borski and Matt for their input. Sue Schill had a couple items that she helped us with. And when we sat down, finally, after meeting with the different people, and it was between the six groups that we talked with, we probably visited with 15 people, we felt comfortable that the contract, the offer by JG House, met what we were looking for, and that it will, they, the city had put together a RFP that went out to the contractors, and in it, they stated which things were needed, repairs, how it would be done, and we had to look at, we had a timeframe, too, that we wanted to see was done, and that would be done in 2015. We didn't want anything to carry over to 2016. And we felt most comfortable after the discussions with House, and that they would be able to meet all our requirements. Included in their offer, their bid to us, their request, their proposal, was that they will come back yearly for a five-year period of time to inspect their work, which is, was the only one that was indicated they would do something like that. And I saw that as a positive, because then if anything is discovered, we can be on top of it, the staff and insurance injector, insurance adjuster, or anyone else, who had, you know, what do you call it, a hand in the work, that we would be able to see that things are done properly. So, with that, I would move for adoption of Item Three of Report Two as a motion.
We have a motion by Alderperson Stack with an amendment, and second by Alderperson Dolan. Any discussion? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. And I apologize that I had to jet out of there when I did, this was just before these folks came into the room. Which probably explains some of my thought here and some of my questions. And I, I know Chad, I spoke with you a little bit before the meeting tonight, and he kind of echoed a lot of the same things that Jim just said. And I don't doubt for a second that this is a quality contractor, this is a really strong individual coming forward with this proposal. I think you're spot on with the idea that them coming back on a yearly basis for five years helps us stay on top of things. I think that's incredible and important, and I really appreciate that. The only comment that I really want to make and want to stress on this really comes down to, when we had the hail damage in '07, we took flak at the city level for not selecting a local contractor to do that work, or not speaking with local contractors to do that work, however that played out, I could, Jim, you could probably jog my memory better on that one, but the concern that I have is that we've gone out, we've solicited bids, again, when we did not have to by state law, we've solicited bids, we've solicited individuals to come forward, we received eight, six were deemed acceptable, and I don't know if the one from last night was deemed unacceptable, that was, I think, in question before, you're nodding that, yeah, that was, that one was ejected. We received eight. Six were deemed acceptable and I don't know if the one from last night was deemed unacceptable. That was, I think, in question before. You're nodding that, yeah, that was, that one was ejected. Okay, so we had two local contractors that came down and I think they gave, from my sitting there, I thought that they gave good presentations. I think, Jim, you were right with that first one with questioning if the work could be done in the time stated. I don't think you're wrong at all. I think that was an ambitious statement from a smaller crew with perhaps maybe slightly more limited resources to them. But, you know, the city pays, the city pays in money for insurance and that's taxpayer dollars. And the concern that I have is that now, for a second time, for a second hailstorm, we're sending taxpayers' money not to Nina, not to wherever, you know, within the state, out of the community, we're sending it out of the state entirely now, that more than likely will never come back to this community again. Taxpayer dollars are leaving by way of its city government. That's the concern that I have. That's all that I really want to say on that tonight.
Alderperson Rehm, you're next, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll just start, this whole thing is over local buying or whatever. You amended the minutes of last night and how does that take place? How can that be done?
What happened was after two and a half hours of meeting with contractors and driving home, and I was thinking about the motion that was made that basically said to award the bid to this company, I was thinking that probably a more artfully worded motion would be to basically say, they're the ones we're going to choose to negotiate with and that pending a successful contract negotiation, that then the bid would be awarded to them. I emailed Jim today and suggested that perhaps he hold it out and that that be the motion. We weren't amending the minutes, really. I think there was just some confusion, but I suggested that the motion read that rather than just simply awarding the bid because there's some work that needs to do, to be done in terms of exactly agreeing upon the amount and the scope of work because this company is going to have to meet with our adjuster and us and really go through everything and basically come up with the contract and the terms of the contract. So that's what had happened.
Well, I heard mentioned last night, the contractors that have come into the area, the contractors here, have so much business that they're, they have to bring workers from the outside, out of the area, to do the work. It was mentioned that one of the companies couldn't take a new, any new jobs for a couple of years. Another, I think, was longer than that that was mentioned, maybe a year short one way or the other. So the local part is just, is really what it is. This company that was there said they would do, try to accommodate as well as they could to get qualified workers from the area. And they said, at least what I heard, there was a high bar set that you were going to get the most quality work that I've ever heard a company give, whatever they called the rating up here, that the workers had to be. So in the five years to come back and that, so I, to negotiate what's going to take place or whatever, I thought that would take place anyway, but I mean, I thought the action last night was awarding that to J.G. House. If we want to amend that motion, amend that, then I think we, let's say that it was awarded to them, but you're going to amend that, you're going to amend...
Well, it's more the semantics of...
You can't just make up the words though after it's been done, Sue.
Well, there's a motion to not go through with the motion that was made last night. You can choose whatever motion you want. I'm just giving you some legal advice that you're really, you're awarding the bid pending successful negotiation of a contract. We want to stress that, rather than them thinking they have the bid based on maybe the RFP, but we know that the RFP, the details in there aren't really going to be the true what's out in the field, but we've already found some mistakes with maybe what the adjuster had done. So it's more of a semantic legal thing. I didn't mean to, you know, not, we're certainly choosing this person to negotiate with and you are saying, once that contract's signed, then they are, you know, they're the successful bidder. It could be that we negotiate with them and we don't like that they're not using any local contractors. We'll probably come back then and ask for someone else. And then, at that point, if we have a successful negotiation, we'll award the bid to that person. So I think there is still some work to be done, but I think you've chosen them, if pending successful contract, that they're the ones to do it. And I guess, sorry if I'm confusing everyone with that, but I, it's more of the semantics of the motion than, I'm not changing really the action that you took last night.
Would that wording, say a different company was picked, would that wording and the same thing apply?
With any company, we would have to negotiate the contract and in fact, I probably would have advised this language.
I don't recall that we always were doing this. I mean...
Well, because this is a different situation where...
Yeah, it's not local. That's the issue.
I guess I don't understand...
The company J.G. House is not a local company.
Right.
And that's the issue because of '07, that, if that was right, whichever...
Yeah, I can tell you that my decision, driving home last night at eight o'clock, was not anything to do with that. It was thinking, the wording of the motion, that I want it to be that J., this company did not think, oh, we're the person, that there is some work to be done in negotiating contract and we, and you mentioned the local contractors. We want to have them use local contractors a lot and perhaps we, they decide that was just a show last night and they're not going to do it at all. Well, we're probably going to come back here and say, you know what, that's not the right one to negotiate with, let's use someone different. So I guess, I'm not sure, as I said, I didn't...
I don't get that, though. I mean, I get the negotiating and that part, but to say that about if they don't hire enough or whatever, local people, that we're going, no, we're going to take who is number two.
Well...
And that's what I see the intent of this is to do.
That was not my intent at all. You know what, I'm perfect, I'm fine with the other motion. I guess it's more of a semantic thing and I didn't mean to cause any issue. It was, had nothing to do with local versus non-local or anything like that. It was more, and it's common to see this this way and I read lots of minutes from other municipalities and I always see different ways to do things and better ways to word things and this was just something that I've seen in the past and thought would be appropriate for this action, but as I said, I won't have big heartburn over it if you want to go back to the old one, so...
The amendment for negotiating that, you know, that makes sense, but the, what's going along with is that if they don't hire certain people, now that I didn't know was part of the, of part of picking them. That's why I'm taking this, that if, that if they don't hire so many local people, and what I said before, earlier, was that, I was told last night, too, that there aren't enough workers in the area. This company did say they'd try, yeah, for the, for staff and that, to talk to them about it and that, what their intent is, I don't know, to me, you're going to have to come up with a pretty good reason to disqualify them.
Well, we're saying they're qualified, though, and I...
Okay, so that there's, it's the negotiations of what to be done, but is, is one of the items a number of how many local workers they have to hire?
No, it's not a number of how many workers. I think the consensus was that they said they would try to hire local contractors. Part of the contract will be a subcontractor plan, just like in the RFP, so that's an integral part of the contract. I, you know, we interviewed two local contractors last night who were willing to do the whole job, so I think they're, they could be very good candidates to help out with this project and I think both of them were willing to do that. So I didn't mean to tie this to local. I guess I gave that example as something that, in the contract, that we might not want to go with, but I, it doesn't have to be tied to that at all. We can not even address that in the contract.
You could do that with anybody that we voted, you know...
And I would, and I would have.
...to do the work that if down the road, something was found, okay?
Right, I would have.
And I, I agree with that. I mean, if that turns out that this is a lousy company or something like that, or that's, you know, that, there could be an issue to bring it back to the council to look at again. So as long as it's that type of things that are being looked at, you know, I guess you can, you know, ask them how many workers they're going to need, you know, and they did, they did respond in a couple cases of trying to get local people if they could, so...
Alderperson Stack, you're next.
Pardon me. Just that, as I saw this presentation in the email from Attorney Schill, I realized that that should have been a part of our motion. As we worked through the night and talking with these different people, as I've said, each of us there on the committee, plus the other people present, felt that this company made the best presentation and would be the party we would like to choose to do this work this time. And so our original motion, oh, where do we have that hit? Okay. It was to approve J.G. House. We're doing that, plus we're staying with that, plus we're saying that it has to be, the details of the contract will have to be worked out. And that's what I see Attorney Schill presenting to us, that we, we there agreed that House was the person and that the details of that contract should have been concluded last night or should have been a part of the discussion last night. And that was my fault as committee chairman. I missed that. Again, the only excuse I have is that we had gone through those different people and as we settled up and finished our discussion that night, we thought J.G. was the person to approach and we should have included that, there would be a, the other details worked out in something like this. So that, that's really, when Sue sent me this and I looked at it, I said, yes, this is something we should do, both for them and for us. We're looking at a project that's almost a million dollars. The details should be worked out between both the city and the contractors so that we do that which is needed and is right. So I'll leave it at that point. Thank you.
Alderperson Dolan, you're next.
I don't really have anything to say after that. I just wanted to, how are you going to vote, Tom? That's what I want to know. I don't know what side you're standing on now.
Oh, I, they made the comment that they would try to hire people. I don't know, I don't think that that should be part of the issue of that if they don't...
I didn't want to say anything because I didn't want to prolong it. I think we should, I think we should vote. Personally, if I can do the work of 10 guys, I can do the work of 10 guys. I don't care how many people they got doing it, they're the ones we want, so...
One final note, I guess it isn't final until it's past the veto window, so I guess you can talk about this all along you want tonight, but, no, just kidding. Anybody requesting any further requests to speak? Seeing none, we've got a motion, an amended motion to award the contract with all the rest of the constraints that you've added tonight.
Motion carried, six As and two NAs.
Move into Item Number B under Item Number Nine, which is the Public Works Committee meeting held April 7th. Alderperson Rehm?
The Public Works Committee met at 6:20 PM on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, in the first floor conference through Wind City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Mayor Verwink, Alderperson Whirl, and Furkey, Joe Whitestead, and Nick Dooms. List of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item One was to call a meeting to order. Item Two, review and approve the low qualified bidder for the 2015 curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract. The apparent low qualified bidder was Roblousky Concrete Construction LLC from Stevens Point with a bid of $75,237.50. There was a motion and a second to approve the Roblousky's contract as the low bidder. Item Three, review and approve the low qualified bidder for the 2015 concrete street patching contract. The apparent low bidder, qualified bidder, was Summers Construction Company Incorporated from Chiaton, Wisconsin, with a bid of $163,999. There was a motion and a second to approve the Summers Construction Company as the low qualified bidder. Item Four, the rapid improvement brush pickup team presented their project to the Public Works Committee. Based upon the findings of the project, it was determined that the brush pickup service provided by the city expends many resources handling such large piles of brush, of which the service was never intended to do. The proposed policy changes would be able to stop pickup of such large piles of brush. Item Five, consider approving brush pickup policy modifications. Discussions followed concerning nuisance problems, increased use of utility trailers and safety thereof, repeat service to properties with large brush piles, service during storm events, and user fees. There was a motion and a second to bring a draft policy to the committee next month. Item Six, request permission to obtain bids for the Chestnut Street sewer lining and monoforming contract. There was a motion and a second to approve soliciting bids for the Chestnut Street lining and monoforming contract. Item Seven, review and approve the 2014 MSA annual report. There was a motion and a second to approve the report as presented. Item Eight, review and approve the city's street lighting policy. Suggested language modifications consisted of differentiating between existing and new residential developments and areas with underground electric installations. There was a motion and a second to approve the policy contingent upon the language modifications discussed. Attachment One in our packet. Item Nine, 2015 project schedule was reviewed. Item Ten, referral list was reviewed and from that, Items from 2013, number four, Item Twenty from 2014, and from 2015, Items Eleven, Twelve, Fourteen, and Sixteen that could be removed from the committee's referral list. There was a motion, Item Eleven, there was a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 7:45 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for the adoption of the report.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, motion to approve by Rehm, second by Kirkpatrick. Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, entertain a vote. Please cast your ballots. Shane said the TV has decided to start doing this today, or just this evening.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item C, the Human Resources Committee meetings held April 7th.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow councilmen. Item one, the Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015, in the third floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present. All others present are on file. Item two, consider approval of a tentative agreement with Local 425 firefighters. And there was a motion and a second to approve a tentative agreement with Local 425. That motion carried. See attachment A. Item three, consider approval of a tentative agreement with the WRPPA police group. There was a motion and a second to approve a tentative agreement with the WRPPA as presented with a corrected date. That motion also carried. See attachment B. Item four, review and approve the revised job description and job evaluation for GIS specialist. There was a motion and a second to approve the evaluation and revised job description of GIS specialist and the change of pay grade from grade eight to grade 12, and job title from GIS specialist to GIS programmer analyst. That motion carried. See attachment C. Number five, there was a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 4:20 PM. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes withholding out item three.
There was a motion by Alderperson Worle to approve the report with the exception of item three, seconded by Alderperson Kellogg. Move into discussion. Seeing no requests to speak, I, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots on the balance of the report without the, with the exception of item three.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Balance of the report, item three. Alderperson Worle, did you want to speak to your-
Yes. Because the police group did not ratify the contract, I would like to make a motion to approve the agreement contingent upon ratification by the union by May 5th of 2015.
We have a second, we have a motion made by Alderperson Worle, second by Alderperson Furkey. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're first to speak.
Thank you. Do you anticipate that they will ratify what's presented?
Alderperson, I'm sorry, Kirkpatrick, you finished? Alderperson Reom, please. You're next.
Would you repeat that, Chad?
The motion?
Yeah. Yeah. What your motion is to-
I would like to make a motion to approve the agreement contingent upon ratification by the union by May 5th of 2015.
That's to approve the one that they rejected? Is that what I'm getting?
That is correct, as presented in attachment B.
But, but they did reject already. Okay. Um, May 5th. All right.
Are there other further requests to speak? If not, I've got a motion to approve pending ratification by May 5th. Chad, we want to hit your button again. Oh, I guess Shane's got it. Second by Todd. Thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven As and one Nay.
Moving to item number 10 of our report, or the agenda this evening, is the report of the Municipal Board of Canvassers held April 8th, April 13th, and April 15th concerning the results of the spring, April 7th, spring election. Is there a motion to approve the report? Whoops. Motion by-
That was accidental.
Oh, okay. I'd entertain a motion on the report.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Kirkpatrick. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. Move into discussion. Seeing no requests to speak. Move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 11, under miscellaneous reports. Item one is the Southwood County Airport Commission held March 5th, April 2nd, and April 6th. Item two, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department monthly report for March. Item three, Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority held February 26th. Item four, the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees held February 18th. Item five, the Park and Rec Commission meeting held January 28th and March 12th. Item six, the Police and Fire Commission held March 11th. Item seven, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department organizational summary for March. Item eight, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held April 1st. Item nine, the City Treasurer's monthly report on investments for February and March. Item 10, the Wisconsin Waterworks and Lighting Commission held March 11th. Item 11, Report of the Committee of the Whole, held April 13th, and number 12, the City Treasurer's monthly report for March. Alderperson Kellogg, you're first.
Actually, it was a month ago or so, we, I think we knew, and decided it was all five people coming around. There's literally all, uh, people who, I think they wanted to find out if they had, if they were. I can do that. It's going to be a trial period. We'll have two per crew, so a total of six firefighters that will be community paramedics. And it's going to be 50 patient trial. And then after that point, we'll, we'll review the, what we have within that, and then we'll decide if we're going to go any further with it. But, yeah, I'll, I'll follow up monthly on where we're at. We should hopefully begin at the end of this month.
Are there other requests to speak? If not, I'll make a couple of comments on the Airport Commission. A lot of activity out at the airport. The Airport Commission has gotten notice from the Bureau of Aeronautics that they, again, have to look at airport approach encroachments. And so a, kind of a strategy was decided at the last meeting here, when I, when I had it here at City Hall, the 6th of April, to, to do a public forum on the subject in late May or early June, and which to invite the Bureau of Aeronautics, our consultant, MSA, and, and commission members, as well as property owners surrounding the property, as this will involve off-airport property now. The final plan was submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration, and with a number of encroachments that still need to be remedied. So I want to put you on notice that that is going to be happening over the next couple of months. And I'll keep you in the loop as to dates, if you'd like to attend the, which is probably going to be a very exciting public hearing on more tree, tree trimming and tree removals. And I'm always asked to mention the Park and Rec report. So I'm going to find that, since I've gotten a couple of requests for people that watch at home to indicate what Park and Rec has been up to. As was talked about in my report, there was some discussion on the East River Bank Trail, and some, the inclusion of that amendment into the outdoor recreational planning. There was some discussion on a city recreational programming, which there were new programs discussed and considered. There's been some chatter at the zoo about fixing up the parking lot and creating a little easier flow of traffic there. Nothing that'll be happening prior to the opening of the zoo this year. And then some update on the 2015 capital improvements in the park. The following meeting this last month, actually in March, was some very important leases with the use of a number of associations in the community to use the city fields, as well as the amendments to the city outdoor rec plan, in which we included some edits related to riverfront access along Riverwood Lane, as well as adopting, recommending to this body the adoption and approval of resolutions regarding the city outdoor rec plan, which came before this body previously, and the stewardship grant application, and another discussion on the zoo parking lot. So those were just a couple of items that the Park and Rec Commission discussed at its past meetings. With that, I'd entertain a motion on the reports.
Move to approve. Place on file.
A motion to approve by Kirkpatrick. Is there a second? Second by Alderperson Stack. If you would hit your remote, if you'd be so kind to do that. Thank you. Shane's got it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move into item number 13, is a presentation of a service plaque to outgoing Alderperson Andrew Kirkpatrick. Andrew, instead of coming around and running back, I don't know if anyone would like to picture it.
Let Sue get out of the way.
As we, as is practice, in appreciation for service as a Wisconsin Rapids alderman from the year 2009 to 2015, on behalf of the city, we'd like to thank you for your service and present you with this plaque. And we'd like to say a few words. You're invited to do so.
Thank you for the contact paper.
We use it in some gift maybe you want to give.
Yeah. Yeah, I do have a couple of words here. If you'll indulge me just a moment. As the mayor said, I was first elected to the council in 2009. It was the first time I had run for public office. I was 25 years old and in my third year of college, working towards my degree. I was excited to have the opportunity to serve my community, to find ways to collaborate on the issues confronting our city, and to push forward for a better tomorrow. When I ran, I promised I would always ask questions, and I did, even when the answers appeared obvious to everyone else. I knew if I didn't know the answer, folks at home didn't know the answer either. And that's what I was here for, to get the information out. When we were presented with items that were incompatible with what was in the best interest of the city, such as the Eighth Street housing project development and the cell phone ban, I spoke out against those and opposed those. When businesses and quality of life opportunities presented themselves, I examined them closely. I made the decision that I was knew, that I knew was right for the community as a whole, voting in favor of projects such as agreements with Energy Composites Corp., The Rafters, Aspiris, and the Tribune Project. When citizens weren't in direct contact with me, I advanced issues forward that needed to be addressed, such as goose control populations in city parks, and recently tonight, our street lighting policy. Every decision was made after careful consideration of all the facts presented, and every decision was made with the best interest of advancing our city forward. In fact, through the six years, I've only got one regret, and that is this last election, not presenting our voters with a clearly elected official. No clear winner, no clear loser. That's how these things go sometimes for right or for wrong. And all I can simply say on that is that this reinforces and proves the age-old saying that every single vote matters. What we need now, however, is for the progress that has begun to be continued. I encourage the next council to continue to examine all economic growth opportunities on their own merit, to continue the work started in the Triangle Block with land purchases and redevelopment, to continue to support the efforts of Encourage with the West Side Redevelopment, to continue the partnership with Regi to closely examine our community's strengths, better define our opportunities and weaknesses, to continue to ask questions of one another, the mayor, city staff, and those that come before the council, and of course, to continue to look out for the taxpayer through the budget process. Serving the community I was born and raised in has been a great experience for me. And I've been honored and fortunate to serve three times. Once again, thank you to everyone that has supported me over the last six years, residents, voters, my fellow council members, mayors that I have served with, city staff, family, friends, and my wife.
With that, thank you, Andrew. I will call for final adjournment of the old council. Motion by Kirkpatrick, second by Reom. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That passes. Thank you. And we'll take a short recess before coming back to our next organizational meeting. Thank you.